Okay.
Yep.
Hey, welcome to this twenty-fourth regular meeting in the State founding commission. Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve.
John.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The honorations were at a couple weeks. May you have.
That's all we had are the honorations.
Exactly. I have the funds.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate's honorations presented this morning.
A second.
All those in favor.
These three refunds are from, were generated through past, uh, set of, alright, so hey.
I'll make a motion to approve the refunds.
Also, all those in favor. I can sign when you talk.
Two columns. These are the consolidation. Chief of staff, both of those at the same time.
Yeah, that's, yeah, she's not that still. Alright, all of these combined by the segregates are the same property owners requesting and only. So I move that we approve them.
Second.
Favor. No, I just need to sign it right there.
And all these consolidations signed, and that part of my computer is just not working.
What?
Really?
It's not working.
Yeah, can we help?
And where's the software from?
C L T, well, I can't remember the name, it's statewide. Program that we spent ten million dollars on and it's not there.
So the state selected it?
Yeah, it's the same company that had our old system, but this new system is just, they're portions of it. That's, that part of it's not working, and, and actual resources.
You, you have two delegates and a senator in here, so voice your opinion.
Oh, our, our opinion.
You wish he never peed.
We got fifty-five counties that are, they're, they're plenty, they're.
Delegate Rose back here saying, oh, no, I'm not saying nothing here.
Not their fault.
He's gotta work the bugs.
They, they paid, they paid the bill.
That's it.
And we gotta deal with the, with the company. Thanks very much.
Well, just a second, Michelle, do you wanna go ahead and go so you can? Okay, alright.
Get payroll, get a, do what's.
Oh, that's the thirty's.
I didn't see mine, did you guys get a chance to review?
The invoice is nothing, this morning.
Is there anything that stood out in those?
There was one, it was a P card entry, I don't remember, but it wasn't made to the wrong person, et cetera. And just everything else is typical.
Alright, I want you to review it with the motion, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor.
Alright.
Okay, and second half of February, I move we approve.
Second.
What's the date, John?
August thirtieth.
All those in favor. Um, I did not get a review of minutes, Amy did get them today, and plenty of time, but we've had, had three emergency meetings last week. We're still working on the emergencies, so. Go ahead and strike broad, state settlements. I move we approve these state settlements.
Second.
All those in favor.
So the next item. Would you do a show, or would you do a couple of audits?
She, she said she's fine.
Okay, so the first thing on your audit items is the N R G R B A appointment.
Okay, I move we approve.
Second.
All those in favor. Alright, um, so the, we already made this decision, item two.
Yeah, we just, we're gonna do a letter. And that was to grant, let Amy do it.
Is this an order?
It's just a letter. We did do a letter.
Oh, are we talking about?
We did a letter.
Oh, the administration, yeah, I'm talking about the meetings, okay.
Yeah, the meetings, that's what I'm.
Um, and it's very.
So what, what this item is about is, previously, the commission, and, and it's happened in several instances, where we were providing paid administrative support through our staff to independent organizations that are quasi-governmental, components of ours, but which have their own budgets and their own decision-making and their own standing in court. And we have discussed with our council and have decided that it is a conflict of interest for a county employee that, for example, do the books for another organization under the county, that if there is a disagreement that has its own independent authority, so if there's a disagreement between the commission and that organization, then that would put the county employee in peril or in jeopardy of a conflict of interest, to, 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 for example, said, we wanna see their books, or, you know, something like that, so. So I move that we approve this order prohibiting full-time county employees from performing paid administrative or financial bookkeeping duties for boards that maintain their own budgets. We, well, okay, um. We need to give the organizations that had the bookkeeping help from us time to transition, because there's software involved and all kinds of other things. So since you're familiar with the software, what is your recommendation, September first, maybe, or October first?
Please, I can, you can find your part of that. I mean, there's not that much in there.
There's not that much, it's just, I'm, I'm still struggling trying to get the state entities to tell me how to dissolve things. So I've been going back and forth with email with them, so.
What do you think time frame was?
I mean, I, I, well, the twenty-fourth, I, the fifteenth would be better timing, except for shutting everything off. I hate to say October first, but that would give.
Well, I wanna give you plenty of time, I don't want it to cause.
That's the problem.
In a positive problem with, with their budgets, and if they need more time, I think we can revisit it, so, yeah, we can extend the deadline if that happens. Okay, everybody.
No, I'm good with that.
So John already seconded my motion, all those in favor.
Alright.
So we'll go October.
Is there?
We'll get a letterhead.
Oh, so I'm just approving, uh, and they have our approval to stand?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, okay, cause did you guys see the language during?
Oh, no, I already seen it.
I read it.
So building inspection agreement, we go away, so the building inspection is out, we did that.
Right.
And then the next is the Meadow River Rail Trail Reservoir replacement. So this is the top four only, oh, nothing that. This is, do you remember, initially, we were able to put it out to bid, and we had to separate the construction cost in the event we didn't get into the bridge, well, this is the bridge part, basically, and I think that you can look at it last.
Yes.
Did you have issue with it, or?
There's issues or something.
So that's just going more in chat when we're moving the project.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor. So you have a full project review, you just separated it. Do I have only one place to sign on this?
No. None of them signs, those ones also. The funding request follows, we didn't talk about that before, I didn't write anything up, but I suggested October for anything outside of budget, and any other funding request should be in February with the rest of the budget.
So this is with regard to requests from outside entities outside of the county for funding. So if you want money for your organization, and it's not an emergency, um, just in general, you know, we'd like money for the V F W or, or a community center or something like that, or styles, which we've heard multiple times this year. Um, the commission is trying to hear all of those only twice a year, so we can review them all in total and look at, you know, the county's strategic priorities, and then decide where the funding should go based on what's available and that sort of thing. And we asked the county administrator to recommend dates for that based on our budget cycle, and so those dates are.
October works, we have, we're all done, September, end of September first, October will be done, and then in February for the next budget year.
So the first meeting in October, and by the last meeting in February, or, so the last meeting in February, first meeting in October, does that make sense?
Yeah, so October was, was the, the thing that was funded in February, and we might be able to consider in October, September, depending on the area, then.
So anything we don't consider in February will reconsider in October along with any new. Um, and so would it make sense to do them based on the budget presentations, the first meeting in February, the, let's do that, so it's first meeting in each of those months, so first meeting in October and February, so, um, do we already have a motion? I move that we approve this, Paul.
I second.
All those in favor. Alright, and we might actually get the last one done. Oh, no, we won't, that's gonna take a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, let's go ahead to, um, county clerk, ready to go? You are.
Thank you, Tom, but then we do a good one.
Oh, I'm not on the side of that one.
And so this is on there, uh, basically this says mailing FYI. Because of the law, the bill passed this legislative session, which require all elections to be run on either the primary or general vote. Um, there are several levy bodies whose levies come up not on one of those cycles and are requesting to be on this ballot in general point two, um, because of timing issues, and so you guys should have the school boards. Um, they sent in a couple weeks ago. Uh, their levy actually runs out October first, twenty twenty, or July first, or February twenty twenty-four. So they couldn't have waited until the primary of twenty-four, because they would already have to have made all the appropriate budget cuts for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year before they would know if they passed or not, but they had to go on this. Um, and then the city of Montgomery also has a city levy, um, that runs out. Looks like they're, they're redoing it, I don't.
Man right behind you.
They're also had to go on this one. So, anyway, um, but this is just that, these things will also be on our ballot after the constitutional amendments. We'll go with all of our offices, constitutional amendments, um, the school board levy, and then the city levy will be very loud.
Yeah.
And there are four constitutional amendments.
Correct, and so, um, delegates and Senator Woodburn, one thing that I know that this commission would like to know, and from what I hear others, is the implications of amendment two and, and how, um, the legislature is planning to help us compensate for the loss of income from our property taxes. So if there's anything that, um, you have to offer formally as a body to inform us of what that is, um, we've been reluctant, we've had, you know, heard the call from Canaw County, and everybody wants us to oppose it. Um, we oppose the loss of income, I think, um, but I, but without knowing if there's a replacement for that income or a plan that's gonna be in place as that income is depleted, um, I don't think anybody on this commission is ready to, am I, am I right? Is ready to come out for or against amendment two, um, but we just don't have enough information at our level to assure us and especially our county administrator that we're gonna have, you know, the makeup, you know, something to compensate for that in our budget, like, I think for me as a Republican in principle, I like to, you know, I, I like the taxes come back to the people, um, but, you know, we run off of those taxes, we, you know, survive off of them, so.
If I could rate, we could set a plan next year to discuss that if you want.
That would. Okay, wonderful.
We have done that with several other counties that worked that well, and that, and we're able to talk about all the constitutional limits at the same time, even having members of the public here, and the mayor's.
That's wonderful, we'll see.
Absolutely.
How about a special meeting for that, and, and so if you just let us know, we'll do our best to work around your schedules and schedule a special meeting for that purpose.
We'll do that, we'll bring a hard copy, so, so, at least, the proposal as we see it right now, although it's all, it's still working, dropping, so we'll take that. And then you still, you know, we, it's just a senate plan, but that we have to get with the house and the, you know, the office, you know, uh, whatever the final plan would look like, but, well, we can change all of that.
Is there any way we could get some, Austin, you guys?
I will, I can reach out to the hospital upstairs as well.
Would you coordinate with Senator Woodburn, please, and try to get that on the same day, so we can hopefully, and, and again, we'll schedule a special meeting and work around your schedule, and we do that for lots of things, so, um, that's very important, and I think, you know, and then if we have enough notice, we can publicize it, let the public, you know, tune in for that sort of thing. Um, and while we're at it, we might as well try to, um, give some information about the upcoming levies during that same meeting, so maybe just the election things, I know we have an education levy coming up, right? And Mayor, if you wanna, you know, talk about your levy and stuff like that, maybe we can get to work.
Delegate Ro has.
Sir.
I was just gonna say, it's my understanding with your amendment, that it doesn't automatically eliminate those taxes, that it allows the legislature, after the needs asked, to keep those entities differently, to properly act for, for the part of acts. But you're, you're right, that's a specific plan, the senate's been working on it, or what the tax structure needs to do, but otherwise, I, I believe the need to say, if, if there is in place a very clear plan of to clear the vote from, you know, do that, I mean, it's, it's dire, you know, it's sixty-one million dollars. I mean, to be a wide enough of all this.
It is, and I don't know what kind of things, I mean, things that popped into my head, I don't know what kind of things you're considering, but, you know, I've always wanted home rule counties, you know, there, there are other things that, you know, you might be able to consider that, that, that could, you know, make a difference in a lot of ways, I don't know if it would make up enough, I have no idea about the numbers, but, you know, those are the types of things that come into my mind, um, especially in a county like this that's progressive and, and, you know, has an increased, you know, a population increase, tourism and things like that, but.
The biggest question I have about, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sure.
This is all talking about, the biggest question I have about it, we have twenty-three deputy scripters on a levy, and the way I understand it will affect the levy, the property taxes, well, guess what? The county will have money to pay the, the deputies, the citizens, the county will lose twenty-three, we work eight-four, and you know it, so.
That's the biggest, the, the, this, the levies will work in what the plan is, and you're gonna come out at a, at a minimum of one billion dollars from revenue to have that on the currency. I've seen that for five years, guarantee, they can't tell us where it would come from. Uh, we, and, and that's why I wanna get up here for a seat, cut better qualify.
Well, and.
And I, we'll get him up here, but then you can have it.
And I know Senator Woodburn that you can relate, haven't been a commissioner, so I know you know.
I've, I've been on both sides, I was on the county side of, for a couple years, working on the numbers, to give us where we're at, so I, I've had, uh, over four years of this, so, I've worked with assessors and with county commissions, just trying to make sure the number's right. I think we had an agreement on the numbers, is what that tax number actually is with the assessment, so I think that part solid out, I think most, uh, uh, most counties are in agreement, whether it's a little bit of a discrepancy, what the senate plan has said, it aired on the side of the county, so if the county thought it was a little more, the state tax department did anything, we'll count something.
Would you be willing to provide us with the, uh, the list of what you're presenting right now, so we can make sure we have for this meeting, you know, that we, we cover those sorts of things that our sources will need to consider and.
But you're since, um, tired of talking about the levies and stuff, I have a question, I know it's down the road. Um, each levy body being, you know, like, for the law, for the levy, sixty, hundred dollars of, for a bridge, or, or, you know, when you have a special one, then the library does, everybody can come up fire, like that off.
Last that question too much.
So, do, do we have to pay for it, that it still come out of ours, or since law that it's not be running on primary or general, is it free now?
We didn't, we literally transferred in June. Yeah, when that question was, so, and I was, I was actually bringing that up, because, um. He's right, the levy bodies are supposed to pay for their own levies, and the way that's worked in the past, is, we can run, we, with the type of city levies, who they typically pay for their, their own, you know, for the people born, for their levies, um, the county pays for it, and then they're reimbursed out of the levy monies that are raised to, for the election. There'll be costs involved with adding these things to our ballot, but they're gonna be way more difficult to suss out than in previous. I mean, we have an election, we can keep track of how much all elections cost, but, but like in the case of this, the, um, the school levy is, Equis levy is three typewritten pages long, and all that will have to be convinced onto a, into ballot. Um, it very much likely make it two, a two sheet paper ballot. There's extra programming involved, like with the city, uh, city election from Montgomery, um, there's extra money involved with us having that ballot style program, and then that added to just the precinct forty-seventh ballot, that they're gonna want to vote on it, and it's bringing city limits from Montgomery. You know, so there are some costs involved, but again, that, and that would be up to, I think you read the code, like, may, it's, it's not like, it's not shall pay. I think, so, I think, I'm like, you guys, if you would want to try to recruit, I don't know how we figure it out, I don't know how we figure out all this.
Well, I think our.
We're just gonna be using.
The way it's ordered, word in the levy order, talking about the eight-four, like, a lottery's about one day.
Okay.
That's why I can look at it.
Okay.
So just, and, what is that? Those two, those two things, elections here and up. Um, I was gonna warn, the ballot's gonna be very long for voters, um, at, when you're at the express though, because there'll be the wording of all, all four constitution amendments, and there'll be the school levy, and there'll be, you know, in Montgomery, there'll be the city levy on the two, um, it's just gonna be a lot of, lot of pages, so. And then, yes. And then, um, clerk performing in, in Knott County, and I are kind of trying to figure out, who, who are the type to vote, Mayor Ingram? Because it's two different counties, and it's supposed to be the levy, the governing bodies, that's the rule of cancer.
Surely there's a precedent.
Welcome to the panel, Paul.
Yeah, well, but the precedent was always, they did it at, at the city level, they've never had to do it at the county level, within the city before. So it's something, so that's, you guys don't need to do that. That's a little clerk, built inside clerk communication, so.
Do you have your list of coworkers, I know, I knew Delegate Haynes did provide his list.
He did.
County Minister's desk is.
Um, my understanding is, everybody's definitely meeting that last line, um, with the purpose of approving, um, hoping to get it, you know, there too, they haven't publicized yet, to get it through, um, and we are working on the, the, that, that fifth person breach, precincts, the, the commission, the commission's list, they're working on it as well, so, it seems to be a little ahead of the game as we work on the primary, but.
That's, that's what we want.
Learn and, and start doing things, see, maybe change, so. I'll wait for you next time, with more elections up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, do you need a break?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a, um, ten-minute break, sorry, we're gonna start a little late, but.
John, did on several calls with you, but never met.
Alrighty, resuming, and we have, um, Delegates Haynes and Rowe here to present us the Upper Canal Valley Recreation Plan. And thank you for indulging us for our break.
Yes, oh, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda too. UW received a book, uh, prepared, detailed, uh, Upper Canal Valley Recreation Plan, uh, it goes into pretty good depth, um, so I think you'll find that helpful. Over the last several years, it's no secret to any of us, that the Upper Canal Valley has, uh, has suffered from, you know, one thing or another, um, and I think that now is a time to invest back into the valley, um, to spur its growth. Fayette County's economy largely surrounds tourism, um, and with the valley, so first of all, I'm gonna back up, this plan, uh, goes from in Canaw County, Charleston, up to, uh, Gollum Ridge, so, on Fayette County's side, from the, from Richard Gollum Ridge, I think that with the river coming through, we have a lot of opportunities to develop, we have the, the ridges where we can develop trails on abandoned mine link, um, and things of that nature, so, uh, if, if this is implemented, um, I think that what you're gonna see is some private sector investment into the area, that's where the people are the investment, so, um, something like this to me is, uh, is hugely beneficial, uh, not only for the valley, but for the entire campus, uh, so I would turn it over to Delegate Rowe. You want to say?
Delegate Rowe, no filibustering for that.
That's right, that's right.
Please.
I am, I am so honored to be here, thank you, and I was the president of the Middle Trail City Highway Association before two thousand, and for me, it's, it's almost an emotional experience to be standing before you and proposing that we have a tourism portal from Charleston to the New River Board is an unbelievable opportunity, and you said, well, what, what's changed, Larry? Well, what's changed is, first of all, Canaw County Commission has a one-point-two-million planning plan, not, not go do, but go plan, and, and it includes, and it's always included Fayette County, and, and it's, it's, it's vision with it, and I would propose, even to the county commission of Knott, because they have not included, I think it needs to go up to Anstead, to, because of all the improvements at the park, and also that you can go chimney corner up and then get to, to the board, so what I'd like to do is, is the two important highway projects that we need, one is the bridge at Canaw Falls, that's got to be, uh, built, constructed, and something happened, because we have that being important. One is the bridge at Canal Falls that's got to be uh built, constructed, and something happened because we have hefty and important trails that are coming up to the river can't cross. You can't cross between Charleston, even below Charleston with an APD, and the only places that can all, do we get a new bridge? Do we get the old one fixed? I don't know, but we've got to do that. Number two is we need a divided highway from Chilean to Montgomery. You say why? Well, as I was coming up and and had my maps, you know, it's it's going to send me down the fastest route, it's gonna send me down to Beckland up and bypass the whole port. So we've got to get a divided highway in those two pockets. What else has changed? Well, the federal government has finally acknowledged that this has about ruined the coal industry and the coal field community. And the and and so we have new money in coal coal field communities. There are eleven federal agencies tasked with helping communities redevelop. So there's an opportunity and and your county qualifies and Canal County qualifies. And I called Reverend Watt on the left side and said, you know, you're a coal field community. He said, no, I said, it's it's county why. So it's not just community. And what else has changed is that the D E P has a ten million dollar grant for demolition of abandoned houses. And so and and then the this we, the legislature passed a a a bill for coal field community development. And it has an enhancement grant fund to pay the pay the match fund for coal field community getting federal grants. Just think, if we if we dedicated two hundred million dollars to coal field community development, we'd be leveraging one billion dollars. Now, that spreads around three ways and that will do it. Now, imagine with me what we're talking about. And the these booklets are really good, that's really, there are the ideas, the imagination, this is like flying everything from Charleston east to Fayetteville. And and we'll see that it's not just riverfront development, which we want, we want lodges and restaurants and docks and piers and parks worth them. And we want that, but we also want development of the ridge top. Now, with water and sewer, that's another thing that's changed, we need federal money, the state agency for water and sewer. If water and sewers put up on those ridge tops, they will develop, private industry will come along and provide us with lodges and and entertainment venues and so many different things. So you say, well, what what do we do? I would suggest, I would suggest that the Fayette Commission uh contact and be kept direct contact with Canal County. I think that Canal County wants that, uh, we uh want the Fayette to be included and 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 I would suggest perhaps exploring an ARC grant for the Fayette County port. Uh, a planning grant to add to Canal's and uh it wouldn't, I can't see any benefit, any theory on that. I understand that Montgomery may be getting an ARC grant as well for river development. Uh, I would also suggest that the demolition grant would be to keep uh the uh access, that the county do a a survey of the entire county and take a picture of every bad house and every industrial building and find out who owns it and and be ready for demolition grants. Uh, and then I think specific support, the highways for that bridge at Canal Falls to be replaced, I hope we have that. It's a twenty thirty families that live across the bridge that need access across the bridge. But and and somebody goes, well, you don't want to spend thirty million dollars on a bridge to help twelve people, you know, or or twenty people or whatever. But that whole area will redevelop if that happens.
Well, and there's critical infrastructure that's run across that bridge underneath it too.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's it's the way you cross the river up on our end. So there's just so many things that can be done. Also, I would hope that you all would support this in Canal, uh, the the four lane, uh, either three or four lane up to Montgomery. In order to get the traffic into the corridor, the tourism board. I just, in my lifetime, I haven't seen more opportunities like this up right here on the county. This planning grant is not kind of, and I'll give it to the commission, so I ain't gonna be the legal on this. I I just think this is exactly what we need. I mean, Fayette stands to gain perhaps even more than Canal, I don't know that. But what's interesting is our mayors, I, we have about ten mayors from Charleston to to Fayette. And they're seeing it as a cooperative effort, whereas in the past, everything was kind of competitive, you know. If you were writing for a grant for your town and the other towns, you know, got less likelihood to get their grant. So I think there's a new spirit of cooperation among the mayors in in the Upper Canal Valley. And and Fayette, I think, needs to be included and we definitely want that, because I think to make this border work, that you're all. This is this is right. I really, again, thank you for the honor of being able to, I really appreciate it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
If you guys were to take that, Cassie Riley is here from Canal County, she spearheaded this project on there. She's a good resource that you have, if you guys are taking that.
Thank you very much for having me.
Cassie, I hate to interrupt you, but you are the project manager for this town, right?
I am the director of project management, so that encompasses a lot, but this is specifically one of the projects that we will be working on. But it's a collaborative effort with external agencies that we have, you know, created strategic partnerships with to develop the plan.
The director for Canal County projects in general and not just this project specifically.
This is one of the main tasks, but it it involves a lot. We have a small scale economic development projects, but this is the the main priority that I work on. And, you know, in this plan, we've we've identified three really crucial aspects. So recreation, entrepreneurship and lodging, those are, those are three main tasks that we're looking towards building up with our community council and our alliance and other agencies. Um, the the recreation community thing, equine trails to 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 walking trails, uh, cat building the quarry, uh, four by four. So, you know, that's a huge part of it, we see huge influx of visitors from those already. So we're we're looking to build upon that growing community. Uh, and the entrepreneurship aspect, which I think is really important to build upon our our small scale and small town cultures. It's doing small business grants and small business loans to to really promote small entrepreneurship efforts. And lodging is another one we're looking to partners to develop some things for things like campgrounds, RV parking, things like that. And the work towards making it a name of four areas to sort of everything. And if you have any questions uh on top of that or anything from our perspective about.
Can you just give us a Reader's Digest version of this?
The plan in general?
Yeah, taken us through the the quadrants.
Sure, so if you look, there is a map identified right from the beginning.
You wanted to use this to help them?
I brought my.
Okay.
But if you take a look at the separate quadrants, it's broken down fairly well. Um, the quadrants are divided by the specific activities. There are in some quadrants uh have larger steps uh to keep the numbers, but you know, coming right side up outside of Charleston, we've got the developments in the county solid forest. Uh, things like trees on the front and stuff like that. And coming down a little bit further, we've got the the four by four off road excursion. And these are, these are all, you know, broad plans at this point. This is, these are specifics that will develop over time. Uh, and down here in the lower quadrant, you've got the half building the four trails and the man of prison, which is uh being one of those for being man trust. Uh, they actually just got a two point seven million dollar grant to start developing trails up there, they got for thirty miles of the rim trail. So these are, you know, four of the big, big ticket items. But I I mean, along sixty coming up this way, we've got different things identified, such as campgrounds, uh boat docks, uh kayak launches, different projects such as that. That's one to to help bolster these small towns and really help unify the Upper Canal Valley in this project.
I have a couple of just comments for considerations that you guys planned this thing. And we've learned about one of them the hard way this past week. But um when you talk about, I grew up in Montgomery, so I've driven all those roads, including the shit, or the way Canal Falls Bridge. We call it Boonsburg Bridge from my side of the river. But um anyway, the. Our flooding in the Canal Valley happened this time because of the mountain top drainage. So if you're talking about putting infrastructure on the mountain top, you know, and also you probably know that Route sixty, especially there in Chilean. We tend to get rock slides all the time right in there. I mean, we've had huge boulders damage that road several times. We have that same thing all the way up Route sixty during these, this last set of storms last week where it was blocked the whole way. So I feel like as you plan this or plan expanding that road, I see the engineer smiling back there. But um you need to consider the expense that's gonna come with. And I don't even know if it's possible to mitigate that kind of damage and drainage and blockage of if we're gonna advertise these tourist routes and they're blocked for, in our case, what sixty's blocked for at least two days. Um, with rock sides, thirty nine was blocked for longer than that. That, you know, that's something that you really need to, you know, to consider and plan for. All of the sewage infrastructure from the mountain prison up on the mountain was washed out with this flood. And that could happen if you put this infrastructure up there and you don't take that into consideration. Or again, I don't even know whether, I don't have the training to know whether that's even, you can plan around that or to what extent. But but if if you can't, then you need to plan around um getting some emergency response in quickly enough to clear those routes. And and that's a, that's just one thing that came to mind um as a heads up. Another as a heads up to you guys, this commission has prioritized economic development and infrastructure between Anstead on Route sixty and Route nineteen. And developing um and bringing in, we already have one business that's out at that intersection of sixty and nineteen. And we're trying to get sewage infrastructure run there. There is no sewage infrastructure north of the bridge to Summersville in Fayette County. So we're trying to work on that. Right. And we prioritize in every earmark, we've been consistent and clear, it's what we want to do. We want to expand Anstead up Route sixty, we also want to go out Chestnut, Bergrady, get to nineteen, to the visitor center for a park. So we're doing our part on that side of things to to create, you know, kind of close that gap in my way, this plan and and what we're doing up here. Um, and a third thing I was gonna say that we have prioritized the dilapidated housing issue. We've already done some of the work that you suggested. Um, and we we sent our zoning officer out to kind of take a look, um, take pictures. And we we started with the homes are long Route sixty and our major tourist route, so six twelve Route sixty. And we haven't done the whole county yet, but we did prioritize and ask for funding for those tourist routes, including Route sixty. So I wanted to let you know, at least from the county level, and colleagues, please kick in if I've forgotten anything, what we have done and prioritized this in the last year and a half.
I appreciate that, absolutely. That is, that is something that we have curated a large, but this one is one from our perspectives. We've dedicated five hundred thousand dollars specifically to the demolition of of light structures in the Upper Canal Valley heading up this way. Um, so that is one of our big pushes. Another thing is working with the River County Mayor's Associations to do things like community cleanups and and really sponsoring a culture with volunteer. Helping the neighbor, because I think that's gonna be so important, because this is unifying effort. And our main focus in all of this is working with the communities instead of, you know, coming in and doing things to them. So we're we're trying to take a big focus on working together with leadership teams and the team to at least help identify these structures um and and help on major.
Are you working with our New River Board Regional Development Authority?
I have not spoken to them as of yet, but if that is a relationship that you think of.
It is, I bet you think so. I mean, I mean, they they're very active in the small business and bringing small businesses here, they have great programming, they represent four counties. So so it affects Nicholas, Fayette, Raleigh, you know, so everything and I think Summers is four county. Um, but it, so what they do is, um, like we had a business that was, that showed interest in um locating at Route sixty and nineteen. And basically they bought with that business and gave them all kinds of state incentive programs and worked with them. Um, they also have the hive, which helps small businesses get started, they do small business loans. So they're very active and productive on our behalf. So it would be a great relationship for you to have, to know what's going on here. We include them in our regular meetings, we're we're getting information and um and they, you know, anytime, they're very responsive. So so, you know, I definitely would like to arrange for them to get this rethinking. Um, Jenna Belcher, she spells it J I N A, pronounces it Jenna. So and to make it more confusing, our more local representative is Jenna Grayson, spelled G E N N A or J E N N A, and they both have something on there. So um we call them the Jennas.
Jenna Square.
But yeah, but the but the Jennas are both very active, very bright, have lots of resource, lots of ideas. Energy RDA is growing, has done a lot for us. So um they are a great partner to have. And I also put you in touch with our planning officer, who's kind of doing the dilapidated housing. We're trying to reconstitute our beautification committee, which is our first step, and then we hope to create a land bank and then progress from there. But we've had a hard time with step one, because we have, you know, beautification, you know, has to have certain qualifications to be on there. And we're having trouble getting uh people to step up to do that particular one, because our county's already spread them with volunteers.
I already know that Phil Wells is involved with their group on working on the trails. Um, he was from the very beginning too, yeah. And then Tom has also done a lot of work with trails that could tie into the end of Golly Bridge and bring it on more this direction, hopping over into Raleigh County. Joining the trail that's coming in from Hinton and Raleigh County and Mercer County and taking it to the Blue Ridge Parkway. So there's, there's all kinds of things that is connecting and it seems like we could be one of the major hubs.
Could you tell them about the GIS mapping and the trails stuff that you've been working on too?
Oh, you're talking about just the.
The mapper and how Mappy doing that?
Yeah, we we've hired a GIS coordinator and I've done some mapping myself, but she's working with the nine one one center right now. Then we're gonna move on to mapping all the trails, put them on a map. We've actually got a recreational map that's out there that we're gonna utilize. It's it's out there now, but we still have to add stuff to it, we still have to map stuff. But yeah, we're gonna use as an advertising tool also.
Commissioner Wheeler of Canal County also has a very big interest in GIS mapping. So that's something that we've been looking at as well as trying to find a way to not only GIS map all of our trails, but also use it to identify blinded structures. So we can identify trends or clusters, things that need to be taken care of and other things like that. So I I appreciate that.
It's very important to have one in mapping.
Great minds think alike, absolutely.
I, and I think a big thing, and and we're working on this too, we're working on revamping our website, because it looks like it came out with Dawson. Um, but branding is a huge thing. Okay, County with the National Park here, um, we we think branding is important in the image that we put forth. So we want to make sure that any information you have on any of this is, that we are able to link to it from our our website. And that we work with the park service to make sure that its website or information reflects all of the other options available here when people.
Absolutely.
Um, come to the park, because we've seen an over thirty percent increase in tourism without Asian population. We expected a thirty percent with the Asian population and largely comprised of the Asian population. But because of COVID, that population hasn't been able to travel here. So we still expect to continue to get visitors. And we do need things other than extreme sports to attract them here, because right now, that's really our jam, that's what we do. We have a whitewater, we have mountain climbing, zip line, you know, but a lot of people are interested in history. We have a lot of history here, but we don't really take, like I would like some help with the Stuart Limpere Sand, for example. Beautiful location, it's one of the most beautiful things that's happened. And we've got Canal Falls right there, and if we could get that place rehabilitated, um, it would, you know, make a huge difference. Tourists could go there and check it out, they eat, it's halfway between Charleston and up here, you know. Um, and there are other, you know, Thurmond, and we've got other places that get here by train. Even if we could have a train between, you know, Charleston, Montgomery, Thurman would be nice if we had some tourism, because transportation is a big issue here, right? We have people coming from the airport and getting dropped off at the park visitor's center, and they think they can get an Uber. Like usually there's like one Uber driver and you have to know who it is, like they don't even use that. I mean, so we're not even there yet and and we haven't had the funding or the ability to connect the valley with the plateau area of the county. And then we have a whole separate part of the county, hopefully if we can continue to get all the way up to Greenbrier County through Meadowbridge and Davis. You know, and right now, so you might want to engage Greenbrier County to see what we can do, you know, between them and us, if you wouldn't mind, you know. Because um because then you're getting up to, you know, the other side of the barn and the gorge and Summers County and Hinton and over to um the Greenbrier and, you know, other touristy things. They're all still within about two hours, you know, right?
I think connectivity for this plan, I mean, it brings so much love and wisdom from West Virginia. And necessarily specifically, I want the the possibility to really, and I think looking at this as a collaborative plan as opposed to individual effort, it's gonna be central and it's gonna bring everybody up to the same.
If we got to the point where we could staff this issue, um, like in all cases, we're much longer, Kenny, um. What would that look like that would help complement your efforts?
So that is a question that I would need to refer to my team, that's not a question in my opinion to myself. Um, because it would really largely be dependent on what sort of support or collaboration we would be from Fayette County to move forward. Um because it would really largely be dependent on what sort of support or collaboration we would be from Fayette County to move forward. But that is definitely a question that'd be more than willing to take back to our steering committee um and we could reach out for some sort of effort.
I I think that would be helpful, don't you? I mean, because we have prioritized some of these issues, but we're smaller and, you know. So we sent our zoning officer out to do dilapidated housing, but she's on solid waste. So, you know, we have a lot of people with dual hats, but we're also fortunately have still have most of our arc money. Um we have other things that we might be able to do things with, judging better. Um so hopefully if not right away, we might be able to staff it in the future and figure out.
That's that's largely in our planning grant that we receive. It involves funds for staff and to do things like engineering, planning. Things like that. So it it's um. It's something that is just gonna take time, but I'm looking forward to to working with you all and anyway, I'm still game. You always feel free to reach out to me if you have any more questions.
So the first step would be for us to go ahead and apply for the art grant for planning.
That that's something that we obviously will come to look at, absolutely.
Well, I just wondered what your recommendation was since you've done this on yourself already, you know, seem to be a progressive a little farther.
Right, so we did the, I did not personally, but someone who was working with this company. Did the art application um and we were, we received those funds to do the preliminary planning, but it was. It was laid out with, you know, necessary staff, you know, funds that would be needed to do. It's a, it's a three-year grant. So we've got funds to stretch over that.
Okay, and if we. Would would we be able to get a copy of your grant request?
I'm not specifically sure, but I will definitely ask him if I'm able to.
We we need good.
The A R C is led by Darren Farrell from the Development Office. And so every year, all the A R C grants go to Darren Farrell and as the state representative of the A R C. They get forwarded to the government and Mr. Abraham from Governor's Office approves these things. Um which is a benefit too because of all these, this is ambitious project. You need the government to support on this and A R C runs directly through. Um I'll try to find this specific question from A R C, um but A R C publishes all the approval requests. So assuming this was approved, it's in either twenty twenty one or twenty twenty master plan development through A R C.
Alright.
If you give Ruth your information, uh we'll try to get Jen and Jen in touch with you.
The N R G R D A.
And another thing about the recre- recreational map we've been working on, I'll have her send you a link to what we started. So you get a general idea of what we worked on with a recreational map.
Okay.
I just wanted to add some of that conversation. Uh the N R G R D A had a very active trail group now. So they have a subcommittee for the four counties and moving on. Uh so that's going on. The other thing, if you go on upstream. This has ties to the Great Eastern Trail and the Appalachian Press. So you'd be able to get all be one of those trail systems and access and ones going down into the board is is the work that's currently going on. Sixty miles. So so it ties into Virginia counties or or work with me on that. Uh and then Mercer County, you know, you have a straight line down. All those three river valleys converge to Hinton and some time. So but those trail systems will be one of the river valleys.
I think once we have it, people are gonna come. I I read this article about a guy who had biked through every single U S state. And and he said West Virginia was the most difficult because of all the hills and valleys, like he didn't have enough time to recover. You know, before he had to go uphill again. And um and I can see the sports enthusiasts, you know. Taking that as a challenge and trying to get in here.
You get out and look at a lot of articles about our part of the world, easy to then uh water trail community. And one of my favorite gentleman, Pike Wrap, was coming down some some porch. And he said it's the only place they've been and saw more bald eagles than people and they only saw one bald eagle.
And we have talked to Jen and Jen about this project before also. They are a little familiar, but they wanted more information on it and we didn't have to give it.
I am glad I was able to come and speak to you guys today and appreciate it as as always if you, if there's anything I can suggest or if you have a question, please feel free to.
Thank you.
Colleagues, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Larry.
For the, he's talking about the special meeting. So we could, you wanna do it that afternoon or do you wanna, we can just turn that into the meeting for this? Keep the agenda clear, so that's necessary. Well, I was just thinking, we haven't, have we scheduled anything for that day yet? We have. Our association and.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got. Yeah, there's some stuff for our association.
Let's, you wanna do it afternoon then?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
Can you do that?
What's that?
Our mo- have our morning meeting and then.
Sure.
Then reconvene in the afternoon for the purposes of this. Or I I mean, we could set the fire level for the afternoon too if we want to do it. If you want to. You wanna do a special meeting for that again, or do you wanna just do it all one day at different times? We have our routine, just quick stuff that we can knock out within the first ten minutes. So I mean, if we set everybody.
We need to see what are we having there. Let's make a date of it.
So we could do it at ten and move the rest of the meeting on twenty four?
I think some of this stuff for firing to be on the.
Yeah, yeah, you're probably right about that. So. Do you wanna? What time are they thinking? Sure, let's let's see what he's thinking and then we'll.
Does he have another date besides?
See if he has another day. That is our regular meeting date.
For this. We could.
If it's that detailed.
I I think it's, yeah, I I don't have much of that stuff.
Okay, I'd rather not disrupt our um regular meeting. Now, what do you think?
We have time, John. What do you think?
Instead of what we have.
About having a special meeting for the park association.
We probably should, probably needed. Yeah, we got time to sit too. Ruth probably better for him to call Ruth.
Yeah. And then once she finds out, then we'll figure out. Whether we'll schedule around it or.
Take care.
Alright, um Ziva, I need a break because now we're caught up and almost ahead of schedule.
Good small play.
Okay, well, let's do ten minutes. Okay, reconvening about ten twenty five. Are we needed?
And we were.
Okay. Alright, well, first, first, let's dispense with the solid waste discussion and decision. Um we're gonna have to postpone this, I understand. Well, let me address the two that struck off. Frontier canceled its presentation and it had requested to be on our agenda, so that was ten o'clock item. Uh for the ten thirty item, um after consulting with council. Um after he reviewed the opioid settlement, um he went back to look more and more full with some questions. And they need more time to get information together, so we're gonna postpone that item as well. Um and we do not have a date, so we'll just have to strike it from the agenda. Uh reschedule it. With regard to solid waste authority discussion, um the only member of the solid waste authority. Who is available and who went to the last meeting is our county employee. Zoning officer, so um I don't think it's a proper time to discuss that without. Or representation from the solid waste authority present. Um so I move that we postpone that to um. Let's do it on the twenty fourth in case we need to keep the seventh open. The twenty first, that one is twenty September twenty first. All those in favor? Alright, and we're at flood related updates and we have Kevin on Zoom, I think somewhere. Well, I'll start while getting on there. So the. There has been a lot of discussion in the valley about um and and I think it's due to poor information coming. Can you ask Kevin raise his hand? We can't, I don't see his name on here. We can't unmute him, so. You can't unmute him? Yeah, I don't see one here. Who's the F C? Right there. Alright, so um. All of us received communication from constituents and council members in the valley who were concerned that the commission was not. Um doing anything or not enough in response to the flood effort. And and I think anybody who's been attending our meetings uh saw that we had three emergency meetings last week. And I know that that I and my fellow commissioners have been actively working in our emergency manager. On this since five A M last Monday morning on August fifteenth. Trying to rally state resources, uh daily teleconferences, a lot of things that are behind the scene. Um we've been down to the valley. Commissioner Brennaman delivered um storage boxes down to the um. Loading facility down there at the Gateway Center over the weekend. And. The one thing that we weren't able to do because of some uh poor information we received last year. Um from the state was call in the National Guard as early as we would have liked. The reason is um the state emergency management department told all state emergency managers. And we learned this for more than one sector because we had an emergency manager as a consultant at the time who advised us that we could not. That the governor would no longer fund the National Guard in response to an emergency and specifically flooding. Because the emergency fund had bostoned in the do it for baby dog vaccination campaign. And that was the information that given to the commissions through our emergency managers. And then we received a price list from the National Guard about how much it would cost. To call the National Guard and engage it and that the counties would have to foot the bill. Um and anybody who watches our meetings may know that this commission has limited resources and has. Prioritized resources for infrastructure funding and things, and so we don't want to spend money. We don't have to if we can. Accommodate the situation outside of of our prices, even though it's more efficient and proficient and we would love to have regards. Well, it turns out that information was incorrect. Um and thankfully Senator Baldwin pointed that out to me late one night. Um I'd already been in communication with my colleagues and we talked about the guard and we wanted the guard. We knew we wanted them. Um and as soon as I found out that the governor might pay for the guard, that was an easy decision. So we went ahead and passed the um. Our emergency manager to formally through the state request the guard's support. Um and then through um anyone who knows our uh former chief deputy prosecuting attorney. Um is married to General Frain, who is the head of the West Virginia National Guard. And after trying his main number a couple of times and they didn't get back to me, but um I went ahead and texted her and she contacted me. Put me in contact with him in Peru. Um he told me that the governor had stepped up in other counties and and helped with the flood expenses. He said that he wanted to get the word out to the other counties and and I committed to help him do that. Um that help was available and and it might be free. And so um so we do have National Guard on the ground in Smithers. Uh they showed up yesterday, set up at the Glen Fair's end. And eventually FEMA, if the declaration is made, um. Will likely reimburse those expenses to the state, but but just for the record, the only hesitation was. And it wasn't that we weren't getting help because we were working on the contracts to put out for bid to start to clean up ourselves through local. Um providers rather than than go the more exorbitant guard route. So that was already in progress and we were gonna make a decision on that today. Um still might do it just as a backup, um but. That is what has been going on behind the scenes, so um so. What I say to the valley is, you know, we have your back and we have had your back this whole time. And the fact that you're not hearing, we have your back um from the people who we've been in contact with regularly. Um and with whom our emergency managers are working is disturbing to me, to say the least. We received a, do you, does anybody have a copy of the funding request we received from the city of Smithers earlier this week? Try to, did did you send it to me, to us an email, Ruth, or did we get it directly? Did you send it, John? You were on, okay, here it is, here it is, I found it. Okay, no, Mayor Cavaliere sent it to all of us. What I want to say is, and and I think Mayor Cavalier is doing her job by asking for the help she believes she needed. But when when we get a request that, you know, has a wag between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars without any. Um you know, documentation to back it up and telling us, you know, what's gonna cost what, we can't possibly approve it. I mean, we can't just write a, you know, a check and you do this and here's all this money and we hope you spend it wisely. Um we need to know, you know, what's gonna cost what because um while the city of Smithers had a lot of damage. So did Candleton Hollow and other parts of Fayette County and Scrabble Creek and Golly Bridge. Um that we have to consider in the big picture, so um. So for anyone who is submitting that type of request, we definitely need the hard numbers and the estimates to back that up. If a municipality is going to take over the function and the municipalities this whole time have always been welcome to spend their own money. Um to do the cleanup, but run a risk of running afoul of the very strict and bureaucratic. FEMA regulations that might have precluded reimbursement. And there is nobody in government, and I know Mayor Cavalier asked you the question, who does not want to be reimbursed if possible. Um for expenses. So if we hadn't gone through the bureaucratic process of engaging the D E P. And and others to get the permitting done for the dump sites and to figure out how we're gonna separate the waste. Because there's hazardous waste involved here. We have vehicles, um probably forty plus vehicles accumulated fortunately in one place. Where we can um tabulate that destruction, but we have all of these things going on. We have the P S Ds. Um tons of damage that we've been dealing with. And because of the way the state is structured, we have had really one person plus this commission and and the mayors on the ground. Responding to this while they're in the midst of a crisis. And and our emergency manager had to reach out to at least three different offices within the State Department of Homeland Security just to get a response. Then he had to reach out to D E P. Then he had to reach out to DEP and he had to reach out to DOH and he had to reach out and he had to set up the shelter and make sure people had food and organize the volunteers and this sort of stuff. So get our building inspector on the ground. I mean, so we had all of these balls in the air with, you know, a handful of skeleton crew of people trying to manage this while the state has all these offices, but we had to communicate individually with so we're going to come up with some lessons learned, not going to help the valley in this case. They had to wait an extra week probably to get National Guard help. It won't happen again and we're going to make sure to work and I talked with General Crane, we're going to get him our information. And we're going to work with him to get the word out and we're also going to get lessons learned to the state with some recommendations about how we think things will work more smoothly on the ground. We should have learned these lessons in 2012 in my opinion and we did not. And, and we, we saw no benefit from hindsight with regard to this. And, and our citizens suffered as a result, but we do have the people who need shelter in shelter. And anything else that is not done, I have not received a text because every single communication I've received from a municipality or my emergency manager or the county administrator, the other commissioners, we have reacted and addressed it. The only two exceptions were the 300 to $500,000 request, which we couldn't have heard until today anyway. And the, and an initial request for a certain number of dumpsters to be placed in random areas that were not approved dumps. And we knew from the state that if we did not get those approved, that there was no way reimbursement was going to happen and we might even have been cited for mismanaging waste. So there are greater implications. There was also frustration that the commission couldn't get anything done without a meeting. Well, guess what? We hate that too. But we have to give the public notice of every single meeting and we all three have to be present or at least two or three to make any decision whatsoever. So, you know, we have a process that we have to follow by law and it's for the citizens' protection and we follow that process. So we met on an emergency basis three of five days last week. And would have met again if we had to, but things had calmed down a little by Friday. So, so we were kind of in the recovery phase at that point and cleanup phase. We'd already done a lot of mitigation and we'd already done the emergency response. So I didn't feel and nobody gave me reason to believe that we needed to meet over the weekend, but I guarantee you if we needed to, we would have. And will continue to do so. So, so that was another thing. And I will mention that Senator Woodruff did approach us and asked us how he might, what kind of provisions he might be able to do in an update of the sunshine laws that would apply to an emergency situation that would help us react a little quicker to certain things and, and we will get him the feedback he needs after we meet with our lawyers to do. But, but just, you know, I want to start out by saying like, like any, any criticism that this commission hasn't responded to every single request we've gotten in some way is false. And, you know, I, I welcome the feedback and how we could do things better because we plan to accumulate all of that information. And I'm sure I don't have a complete data set, but I have a fairly complete data set because I get multiple calls a day from our emergency manager and then I update my colleagues and update the mayors and whoever else is a, is a key stakeholder. With that, Kevin, could you please give us an update in addition to National Guard, like what's going on? And then I also have Alan Ballard here to kind of give us an update on the damage assessment that he's been able to do so far.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am. We are on ground here in Smithers this morning. Our LNO is in place. We're here at City Hall. It's our liaison, it's our liaison office between the National Guard and the emergency management agency that will be the go between for more resources or whatever we need from the guard to run that up the chain to help us get what we need in support of the recovery efforts down here. So they're, they're on the ground this morning. The equipment should be moving in later on this afternoon. As you said earlier, they are going to be, from the last of our conversations, they will be housed at the Glen Ferris Inn. Other than that, normal operations are going on right now. We have tons and tons of debris that's going to be piling up. The plan is going to be, we're going to make initial passes through the areas and then we'll make several passes within the next several days. We're looking at a seven to 10 day operation to get everything picked up, cleared up off the street and to the temporary dump site. With that being said, after I get off the commission call, I have another call I got to make to make sure we have our roll off dumpsters coming into the dump sites to be able to place that material in the containers that is separated and sorted properly as they need to be.
Has anyone reached back out to you about those dumpsters or are you still waiting for a call back?
No, ma'am. There was a call back while I was on the phone waiting to speak on the commission and I had to ask them if I could call them back after I got off the commission call.
Okay, wonderful. I was just, because I know you didn't get any response from some of your initial calls. So if, if for any reason you're not getting responses, keep moving, keep moving through on that, you know, don't wait.
So other than that, I've had several questions about the stream restoration process. As I spoke to our county administrator, she advised that a contract has not been in play yet due to our legal attorneys have some questions to fix that. I've just made the statement to all those that has questions, just to please stand by. We'll have information as it comes available. Other than that, it's normal operations. We are winding down the distribution center today. The volunteers are start palletizing bulk items that are in stock. We'll palletize and wrap those. We'll put them in the shipping containers to be stored, to be stored at our location there in Fayetteville. And then we'll get another location here in the valley to have something in the valley as well to maintain complete storage in the event of another situation that was to happen to where we'll have supplies that we are readily accessible. Other than that, currently no unmet needs. As the needs arises that cannot be met, I will get in contact with the commission, with the commission of everything that's going on as, as has been since Monday morning last week. No questions from me. I'll continue the process of getting the dumpsters and working on the separation and everything and get everything moving down here.
How many families were displaced altogether?
I'm sorry, hit the mute button. We have not.
While we ask you a question.
We have not gotten a total number of displaced families. We know of possible two to three total lost homes. It's going to be completely damaged to where they cannot be returned to the current living conditions. Matter of fact, they won't be able to live in, in them at all. Alan was, Alan's going to come down and work on some more substantial damage reports here in Smithers area. I know he was in Golly Bridge yesterday or day before yesterday. He reported that there was one home.
Kevin, let me interrupt you. Alan's here, so we'll get that directly from him. But I just want, how many families have you had to help, you know, find housing? That's kind of what we were.
So housing wise, we have helped four families with housing.
And so I guess for the press who, who've tuned in, anyone who does, Kevin, where should any families who need assistance, who maybe didn't realize they needed assistance? Where do they need to contact?
They can actually, if they can make it to the Gateway Center, we can do the assessment here. If not, they can call the Gateway Center and we are going to be sending assessment teams back up the hollers today to work on assessments again.
Okay, I, I think I'd like to suggest that they call the non-emergency 911 number rather than the Gateway Center because Mayor Cavalier is trying to run that place. They can reach you that way, right?
Yeah, yes, they can.
Okay, so that's three or four, five, seven, four, three, five, nine, zero. Non-emergency Fayette County 911 for families who need assistance who haven't received it. What about the mucking out assistance that, that we have on the ground?
The mucking out assessments is from the Southern Baptists. They have a team of 18 on the ground. They're currently working in Cannleton Holler. The report that I had yesterday afternoon is they've had to rent some equipment to remove a mass amount of mud from around homes to clean out the homes. They're getting to them as fast as they can, but due to the substantial amount of mud and stuff that in homes, it's taken a little while for homes and they're trying to prioritize based on elderly, sick, and then moving on from there.
Do we need to call in any of those other organizations that were on the VOAC call that could provide help given the, the mud and the, the time it's taking?
I will follow up with you on that when I get a report from the Baptist minute meeting today.
Okay, good, because we have VOAT at three.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll update them then. All right, am I missing anything? For everybody's information, VOAT is the, the state's effort to coordinate all the state offices involved in, in this emergency tune into this call, but but also all of the volunteer organizations who show up to muck out homes and that sort of thing or to see people show up. So we need additional volunteer help to muck out homes. That is where we will make that request. So that's the purpose of that, that question. So we need to get through the contract. I know Wes had just one comment right on the, on the contract for debris removal from the streams. Conservation.
Yes, yeah, and the, it was in previous iteration. I just wanted to make sure that mission with the risk allocation. There is a subtle provision at the end that says all provisions are subject to funding availability. There's nothing that puts anybody on notice that says, hey, we lost fund, don't prove anything else or whatever. Now, commission has limited liability in this because you guys see it's $50,000 max. So I, I just wanted to point out so you guys wouldn't be surprised if whatever reason the funds aren't there, that provision basically says that the entire contract is subject to that. So that's with that caveat, and it makes sense, $50,000, it's in all previous iterations.
So is it in this? I guess I'm not clear. Is it in this one?
It is, it's the very last line. It's, it's the.
And we've already allocated $50,000. That's what we did allocate for.
So the question just be, you guys may not be reimbursed if whatever reason the $50,000 funds aren't.
I think we're prepared for that. So I knew that we approved that contract as written and request bids for the emergency authorities we have. All those in favor? So clarification, this is the contract with the conservation agency to remove debris from the streams of Scrabble Creek and Smithers Creek to try to prevent the bridges from washing out some debris that's accumulated near the bridges. They're not going to dredge the creeks because that's a whole different set of money and circumstances, but they are definitely going to try to remove the current flood exacerbators that exist as a result of the flood. So Ruth, are there other contracts we need to consider right now? They are doing the dumpster stuff, but we do have to advertise for an excavator to separate the debris at the debris management sites. So we're going to have to have somebody there when the dump trucks show up and dump a big pile of stuff to put hazmat or, you know, steel or what, however, they have to separate them according to, to the rules. So Kevin, is, did I characterize that properly?
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Okay, so, and we need to advertise that, is that what? And you, you were supposed to, and you were going to gather, because I know Mayor Cavalier had some interested valley contractors who were interested in bidding on this. Did you, were you able to gather that information down there?
Yes, ma'am, and it will be in Bruce's email here just as soon as we get off the call.
Fantastic. Okay, that one may well be within your spending authority with Mission Oasis's consent. But if not, we'll, we'll have to convene to authorize more, but I, I expect it's probably going to be under her spending authority just based on what I'm hearing. If it exceeds that, we can, we can reconvene to. To do what?
If he gets it to me, you can just look at it before you adjourn.
Well, it, it's not so much the, the, what he's doing is getting you the, I don't think they have bid yet. It's the names we, we have to call and say, what's it going to cost? And hey, Kevin, can you also ask your National Guard liaison to give us a kind of an estimate on the, the number of days or manpower or something? So these folks have some data to use for their bid.
Yes, ma'am. Stand by one and I'll get that for you.
Okay, just get that to Ruth. I don't think we need to do that on this call.
Okay.
Okay, am I missing anything that anybody can think of? I do want to say that either Kevin, our emergency manager, or 911 director has been in the valley every single day since this flood and sometimes both of them, most days both of them have been there. Our building inspector has been down there several days now. We have had people on the ground every day. Mr. Ballard, can you give us an update, please?
This has been around the house. I did go to Golly Bridge, that Scrabble Creek. Looks like we do have one house that maybe has been damaged. Everybody else is not going to need to meet that threshold. A lot of HGAZ units, a lot of ductwork. Looks like structurally there's a lot of damage to houses except for one house.
Well, that's good news. Yep, Kevin, it just occurred to me, will you ask your liaison officer from the National Guard? This may be just another request we need to put through the governor about helping and removing that mud because I know the state is very interested in getting the damage assessment dollars in and collected so they can then do the federal request for an emergency declaration. So they may be motivated to help us get into those houses to, to complete our assessment. See on mute. Are you on mute?
Ma'am, I can, I only caught about half your conversation.
Okay, so I would like you to talk with the National Guard liaison officer to request additional help through the governor to remove the mud that's packed around these homes. Alan cannot access the homes because of the mud. We already heard from you that the mud is, is a big issue as far as the quantity and the cleanup from the volunteers. So perhaps we need to ask the National Guard for assistance with that because the sooner we get the damage assessment done, which we can't do without removing the mud in a lot of cases, the sooner the state will have the data it needs to request the federal declaration and reimbursement.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here as our LNO now and he's going to run that up the ladder.
Wonderful. Okay, and if, if they have any questions, you can give him my number and General Crane has my number. All right, so.
And we also had a meeting with the County Smithers, with the National Program actually go into the city and help them do their assessments and, and permitting process and everything.
If, if you need help, like if you find that it's a lot, let us know so we can call.
I've already contacted some, plenty of managers. If you need help, call us more come down.
Wonderful.
But I, I think, you know, maybe me and Kevin together can do it all, probably get some of these things done real quick, quickly. These guys time to time all can get down to your, and do that. We're thinking it's probably five, possibly six homes I feel.
Are those within the Smithers City limits or are those?
No, they're in the county.
In the county?
In the county. The Smithers, I don't know any house that was moved. The mayor hasn't told me anything like that or anything in the warfares and said, you know, we've got some houses that are displaced on foundations that don't need to be moved.
Okay, what about Scrabble Creek? Have you similarly worked with Mayor Golly Bridge?
Well, he was at work. So one of their town workers went out with me and they had a list of about 12 or 15 people and each one of their houses. And we then pretty much looked at what they had, a lot of garages, a lot of personal property. Lot of the houses, like I said, HVAC units and shit outside on the ground. They're gone. I, I don't, I don't think they can be. I wouldn't recommend anybody trying to do that. Problem is you're going to have to get permitted. Since Golly Bridge is part of the NFIP process, you're going to have to get that permitted. So all HVAC units have to be elevated two foot above the flood zone. So they don't get it. That's going to be until, and that's, if we do not get the federal declaration done, that's going to be on home owners to get done. Go back and speak with the mayor, council, and let them know. The process it is, you know, if I have to help them with that. It's got to get permitted. But. Substantially damaged homes, I think we have one.
Okay, so you might even be able to do a workshop for the, for the towns on the permitting and stuff. They're so close. Uh, the Glen Fair, the guard is set up at the Glen Fair, so that might be a good place to have it, you know, right there. He has a backup and her name is Penny, because I met her the other day and she is, seems to be the. She wears several hatchets and treasurer, the recorder, backup mayor. Um, working the, working the supply and stuff over there, so um, anyway, I'm sure.
Got to get as much goes we can, trying to see what kind of dollars we have to handle. My business concern has been the floodplain manager. What causes? We all know what caused. Mayor says she's got that under control now. So, wow, like um, either the county part of Smithers Creek, Smithers and Smithers Creek up. We're going to have to look at some sort of probably stream restoration work. I mean, it's just all the mud's in the creek, so the mud comes out and all the rocks come out. Don't get somebody's house, that's all the mud come from.
What about any reforestation up on the mountain or any?
Permitted juice, but they don't have to allow it in the forest anymore.
Well, after, after we get through the things you need to do to mitigate this, let's. Um, if you'll get with Ruth and we'll get you on the agenda with us in some format.
Somebody at the forestry department. I've been in the floodplain maybe seventeen years now.
I will find you somebody at the forestry department.
Nobody that will take the responsibility and, yeah, we've got all the trees out and washed all the mud down, but that's not what really happens.
I'll add this to my collection of things that we um advise the, the state about. We could do better, but also I'll try and try and do.
And we're, uh, we're going to work on some PA, um, there is some hazard mitigation money out there. Um, the hazard mitigation money, they take three months. To see if you even get the money, then you get the money. Having mitigation money available. People move away to get back in what's already there. I think that's something that you need to look at and figure out. Then Kevin has looked at it, but it's eighteen months, isn't it, Kevin?
Kevin, can you unmute and answer Alan? Hey Kevin? Can you unmute and answer Alan? Is it eighteen months for hazard mitigation?
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
There we go.
It's still eighteen months for approval for hazard mitigation money, correct?
Uh, depends on what it is. Usually it's eighteen to twenty, but yes. Yeah, we should be getting, we should be getting notification of the grant opportunity coming up anytime to apply for hazard mitigation.
Who manages that money? Is that state money or federal money or?
It's federal, yes, ma'am.
Alright. Okay, um, anything further on this?
Commissioner Taylor, if you don't mind, I've got another issue that's happening at Glencoe. I've got reporting of a uh. High wall miner that has struck water and is flooding in Glencoe now, there in Page Kincaid.
Alright. I was trying to listen to the nine-one-one director's radio. I'm going to need more information to understand the full implications. A high wall miner struck water in a, in a mine underground?
That's, that's my understanding. Dispatch was trying to call me and I didn't get to them in time. But from my understanding from the text message I got, a high wall miner has struck mine. Causing the creek to rapidly rise in the Glencoe area of Kincaid. There was one vehicle that was trapped in water. The water is across the roadway. That vehicle has been removed and they have got two fire departments dispatched to that location now.
Are there any miners um endangered?
There was nothing that was reported.
I want to know the answer to that. Could you ask a question, please?
With the thing that you're, there's nobody trapped now, there was one person in the car that got out. High wall miner, something going on with them, but he struck water somewhere and it's come down pretty good. Uh, it's the car, Kevin, Kevin, uh, here the car, where I understand is still in the water for the first impact.
Okay, hey Kevin and Gary.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys could keep in touch with um, as soon as the, the, one of the fire, whoever takes scene commander. Figure out what they need. This may be another issue where we need help from the guard, so.
Gary, will you take, will you take, I see that incident and I'll continue down here and then we'll communicate backwards and forth.
Okay, so we need to know, let Kevin know and then ask the liaison officer if we need to ask for a dish of something, okay? Right, right. I just want to make sure we're um done with the flood. Does anybody have anything to add? I know we have a lot of people on Zoom um with regard to the flood response. Or any questions? Anything? Alright, um, we're going to move on from the, from, we don't have any other decisions we need to make at this time. That's right, right? We just need to do the excavation.
Did you approve this? Fifty thousand dollar contract?
Okay, um, and if you just follow up with us once you get some information on the excavator. And hopefully Kevin can get you at least a wag of what we're going to need. Alright, so moving on to. That's everything on the main agenda, right? We're back for the exhibit. Alright, let's talk about uh the building inspection agreement, Alan. Um, is this the routine? Thing that we do every year?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, we just did it with Oakwood earlier. Okay, um, so if they have any questions or concerns about. Did you ring it?
Yes.
About, you do?
Uh, I, I do. Um, Alan and I have talked about some issues. Uh, Matt, I know that you had called me and I didn't get a chance to get back to you. Um, but a building permit is only good for, how long, Alan?
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days. After a hundred and eighty days, a building permit has to be reissued. Um, also, there's some things that happen, like a roof going on. That needs a building permit for, but we're just letting them do it. So I need you two guys to get together and make sure that you have all the details so that we don't have any issues on that. Um, I, I do know of one building permit that had to be, you know, resubmitted, redone. Um, so let's just make sure that we're all on the same page on it. Okay, thank you.
Let me ask one quick question, being mostly ignorant of this process. Is that? Is that timeframe long enough in the case of a larger project for the building permit?
As long as you're calling in inspections, I can actually extend a permit out.
Okay, so you have the.
But if you do not call an inspection in for six, seven months.
Then you can't.
I've got permits out there that are two, three years old. No inspections ever been done. It's invalid. I'm not, I'm not going to back them up.
Okay, so it's a management tool and you have the ability to extend it?
Extend it out. They have to present it in writing and I have to. Write them a letter just yet for extend it out another additional hundred and sixty days. We do it constantly at the county level, city level, but it's, you know. I do the inspections for them. I don't really do the stop work for these and, you know, when a permit. Becomes a hundred and eighty days old, I don't run out there and say, hey, you haven't done anything for a hundred and eighty days. You haven't done anything for a year and a half. Probably something that has to get done.
Yeah, that's why I mean, I had a lot of it, you know, you know, you have.
Well, now we're all on the same page, so hopefully, you know, be able to do that. And if, I mean, if you think it would help, if you have that problem in any other municipality, maybe we could just. We have turnover.
Most of them, or, you know, it's going to be a new house that gets put down. Most everything else is going to be done with. You know, we'll get done in a week or two.
Or a day or something.
Yeah, a couple of days. Now the big project, I guess. It's going to be permitted real soon with this uh, the schools and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Getting ready to permit all that and work with Secret Savers on their project.
So this is okay after that?
Yeah.
Certification?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm able to brief this contract as presented.
No, second.
All those in favor? Thanks for listening. Alright. Okay, um, at this time I move that we go into executive uh session to discuss um. Privileged information about a building purchase agreement with the council.
One second.
That's at eleven oh nine, anybody needs to go to the restroom.
Thank you.
See you, we'll just see you in there. Alright, uh, back on the record, a long hour, some change later at twelve um twenty-nine. I want to say um. I moved to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the building purchase agreement. But it occurred to us as I was updating our attorney about a um, another urgent matter that emerged. Yesterday that involves personnel um that the other commissioners were in the room and we did discuss that. And we're going to follow up. Um, I am going to be following up on that matter with the others involved and uh, we'll bring it to the attention of the public. When and if it's appropriate, given that it involves personnel. But it was time sensitive and so we did take that up and change, so I say that for the record. With regard to the building purchase agreement, um, we did have a discussion about that. This is uh. On an issue where we had an appraisal of a building. Um, trying to explore whether we could purchase it to expand the probation office. And how's the probation office? We um determined there is more information we need and maybe some other options available to us. As far as spending is concerned, um, so before we take up a decision to make an offer or, or to um. Do anything like that, we are going to gather some more information to meet with the chief judge and um, and. Reach out to the state supreme court, so. Um, that issue is going to be stricken from the agenda for the time being until we can reschedule it, since we do not know the future date. But the um, other commissioners have asked me to meet with um prosecuting attorney and county administrator and the chief judge. Um, to discuss our options, because we've learned that other counties have been able to get. Um, reimbursement from the supreme court for things like this, and our initial efforts to do that failed. But we have more ammo now, so we'll run and explore that. With that said, um, Commissioner Lewis just did have to get back to work. Um, I move that we join me.
Oh, yeah, second.